Welcome tonight to our April meeting. We are so excited you're here. We're here tonight to celebrate employees that have gone beyond the call of duty and to look at opportunities, as always, to make Davie County a better place to live. And we thank you for being here and being a part of it. Now, we'd like to call on for our invocation tonight Reverend Coker Stewart of the Cedar Creek Missionary Baptist Church.
Our Father and our God, we come tonight to say thank you for this opportunity to come tonight to cover for your holy presence. We come now, Lord, beseeching thee to bless Davie County to die as they come about your business, move in a mighty way, and be conducted in a Christian orderly way, and the work of mankind will go forward. Bless the county manager, bless the commissioners, bless those all who gather here tonight, move in a mighty, mighty way, Lord, and we thank you for all your blessings, most of all the Easter, Resurrection Sunday, which you've given us of all our sins, and we can give you praise and give you glory, and all the blessed redeeming the Lord alses. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor, for being here tonight. Next, for our pledge, we'd like to recognize our veterans that do that. Tonight, Mr. Lenny Ring is a native of Ash County. He joined the United States Air Force in 1967 and served until 1971. After basic training in San Antonio, Texas, he spent a tour in Turkey and another in Pakistan. He returned to the States and finished his tour of duty in San Antonio. Mr. Ring is an Appalachian State University graduate. Later on, while working in Maryland, he received his MBA from Salisbury University. He returned to North Carolina and went to work for Champion Products, a division of Hanes. He retired from there in 2011. Since then, he has done multiple consulting jobs in Holland, Romania, Poland, and in many of the United States. He is married to his bride Kathy. They reside in Kinderton Village since 2010. They have two sons. One lives with his family in Asheville. The other lives with his family in Virginia Beach, Virginia. And Mr. and Ms. Ring love calling Davie County home. And we thank you for your service, and we're honored for you to be here with us tonight.
My pleasure.
I ask you now to please rise, place your hand over the heart, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Ethics and conflict disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and Davie County Board of Code of Ethics adopted December the 2nd, 2019, I'd ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda tonight, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest respect to any matter on the proposed agenda which would come before the board for a vote tonight. If so, please speak up and let the board know now at this time before the agenda is adopted. Mr. Chair, seeing no one speak up, I conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Ms. Finney makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Renninger, seconds. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Item six, GIM Awards. Mr. Barnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we do our GIMs presentation tonight, I would like to take a brief second to recognize our Register of Deeds, Kelly Fundenberg, who was named, I believe, two weeks ago our Davie County Chamber of Commerce Ambassador of the Year for 2023. So even though it's not part of GIMs, I told her I would take that moment to recognize it. As a part of our GIMs, purpose of our GIM Awards is Davie County's GIMs program is designed to recognize and reward county employees for excellence in service consistent with the I-Pledge value statement. This program allows staff to submit nominations of their peers for recognition and a monetary award for going the extra mile. First, I'd like to thank our committee that took time to review our nominations this particular cycle. I'd like to thank Katie Brewer, Jamie Gaddy, Joseph Ashburn, Mercedes Barr, and Felicia McSwain, and a really big thanks to Paris Whitley, who puts all this together. Without her, we wouldn't be able to recognize our employees tonight and to have this ceremony. I'm going to read each one of the application, the submittals that were submitted for each person. I'm reading it as if the person who wrote it, so the English gets a little wonky sometimes. And then we'll ask each person if you don't mind coming up front and if everybody will hang out together at the end. I think Paris would like to get a picture of everyone once we're all said and done. So our first one tonight is Heather Byrd. Heather's a public health nurse in Employee Clinic, and her nominee wrote, Heather at the Davie County Employee Wellness Center had a full day of patient schedule. I came in that morning without an appointment to seek emergency medical care. Once Heather found out my condition, she acted swiftly and without hesitation. She immediately took me into the exam room and prepped me for the doctor to examine. Without Heather working around her busy schedule and getting me seen stat, I would have had to go to either the urgent care or the emergency room and would have cost money in medicine. I am truly grateful that she and the doctor helped me out of an emergency situation that I was in. I can now report that with a medical assistant provided, I was able to get back to my normal self.
Do you want to do it at the end, or you want to do it?
That's up to you. Where's Anna, as he reads it?
Yeah.
We can do that.
Okay.
I'll tell you what, let's just do it at the end.
Okay, we'll do it at the end. My next one is for Cameron Webb, our Fire Marshal. And as you would, for those of you who are familiar with emergency services, of course, right before the start of the meeting, Cameron had to step away on a call, but I believe his parents are here tonight to get the award on his behalf. But I'll read Cameron's nomination.
Fire Marshal Cameron Webb was instrumental in the development and facilitation of a new mobile incident command post used during our June and July concerts in the park at Davie Community Park. The command post included facilities for medical, weather, and 911 communications. As an additional safety layer, Cameron's insatiable desire for excellence also led to the creation and implementation of a drone flight map for the entire community park, which can now be used for all special events out of the park. Flight map can be synchronized with drones and allow first responders to locate any potential incident quickly with through drone flyover capabilities. Cameron went above and beyond to provide additional volunteers for the stagehands, identification checks, check-in tent, crowd control, transportation, pyrotechnic, fire line, and watch. Cameron was present for all pre-event logistics and DCPR's emergency preparation meetings. And like most event facilitators, he was on the scene from early morning setup through the late night breakdown at each event. Cameron understands the importance of event preparation, whereas the safety and security of all attendees, bands, production, and staff volunteers are paramount for success. The incident command post was clearly noticed by many visitors who expressed their accolades and appreciation for such a safe and well-organized concert. It is with great pleasure that the DCPR team nominates Cameron Webb for a GIMs nomination for his immeasurable leadership, innovation, and excellence. Next is Courtney Zimmerman. Courtney is our Central Permitting Specialist. The Planning Department has undergone significant personnel and infrastructure changes over the past year. Two top leadership positions in the county's single addressing person left, leaving a huge void and gap to fill. Addressing is an important, is essential, is essential not only to emergency services, but for creating, managing, and distributing permits. Permits mostly include home construction, and there is a large increase in that over the last several years. It is, I've become the sole dresser in the county since the change, and would like to thank Courtney for her day-to-day efforts in assuring that permits are delivered promptly and accurately. Without her efforts, permitting and addressing would be completely discontinued. Disconnected, sorry. She exhibited an awesome ability to navigate the permitting world and communicate that clearly to both citizens and GIS to assure our data is correct and accurate. Next, we have a team of Heather Link, Melissa Brassel, and Amber Johnson of the Tax Collection This team works with EMS to do our wage guardsman and collection and collect the debt set-off. I know this department does not get a lot of thank yous or have good days from citizens because they are the ones collecting money for taxes. However, this group of ladies in the tax collections went with, went the extra mile when the county was sending out debt set-off letters by stuffing 2,000 pages to send out. Additionally, our third-party vendor failed to remove citizens who had already been paid. I add parenthetically, we switched vendors. So these ladies went through all 2,000 names to remove those that were from the mailings that were incorrectly part of the mailing. This helped reduce confusion for citizens and also EMS from unnecessary phone calls. These ladies are always helpful and dedicated employees to the county. They work very hard. Even though things get frustrating, they keep a smile on their faces. Keeping with the team spirit, we have Nathan Williams, Stephen Kennedy, and Sierra Martin from 911 Communications. So this submittal starts off with teamwork. On the morning of September 20 of 2023, telecommunicator Nathan Williams, Stephen Kennedy, and Sierra Martin, and one other communicator for honorable mention, Hannah Puratt, who has since moved on to another agency worked, chased involved in Davie County Sheriff's deputies. 911 Communication was given notification of a reported stolen vehicle potentially located at the I-40 rest area here in Davie County and where a sheriff's deputy unit was dispatched. On arrival at the rest area, the vehicle then fled from the sheriff unit that resulted in a pursuit of the vehicle that lasted approximately 25 minutes and ended in Statesville. While it was understood these communicators were only doing their job, the teamwork with this crew coordinated was unprecedented. Stephen was the primary on the law channel, repeating and documenting all 160 radio transmissions with the information that was being relayed to him. While Stephen was doing this, Nathan was on the phone with Ardell County requesting support from their agency and updating Ardell County Dispatch while information, while information and informing Stephen of Ardell County's agencies and updated Ardell County Dispatch with information incoming from Stephen's agency's involvement. Sierra was on the phone with State Highway Patrol, monitoring other calls that were being processed during the time in the county. These individuals are nominated for their focus in teamwork that assisted in the apprehension of the individuals. While again, as noted, they were simply doing part of their everyday jobs, this incident draws attention to the teamwork and commitment 911 Communication Center has to the safety of our partner agencies and the citizens we serve. And then our last group, again with 911 Communications, is Nathan Wheeler, Emily Holcomb, and Allison As part of their submittal, on February 1st, 2024, the 911 Center received a call from Rockingham County indicated they attempted to transfer a 911 call for a subject having a medical emergency at 1:33 morning glory. However, the transfer did not go through. Telecommunicator Kenneth Wheeler, knowing this was an apartment complex, requested an apartment number and phone number for the patient. Rockingham County could only provide the phone number. With the available information at hand, telecommunicator Emily Holcomb proceeded a full, proceeded a full response and dispatched law, EMS, and fire for a well-filled check, unknown medical, to the location of the apartment complex. In the meantime, telecommunicator Allison Ashburn received a direct transfer from Davison County 911 with the patient. However, after repeated attempts to require the caller's name and the apartment number for precise location, the caller could only scream "help," unable to assist in the location. Kenneth took action, knowing it was apartment complex to call the apartment office number. Given the office manager the phone number, they were able to locate the apartment associated with the phone number. Emily immediately related this information with responding units. Allison remained on the phone with the caller until responders arrived. It was the quick action of the team of the 911 crew that worked this call to locate the patient, saving time opposed to having responders go door-to-door through the apartment complex.
Public comment?
No one signed up, Mr. Chair?
All right. We will move on to public hearings then. Mr. Vogler, we have public hearing rules on this. Did you want to state anything?
We do.
Get into this?
We do, and we can do that before we get started. Public hearing rules. Each person is desired to speak at the public hearing, should come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board, and then comment on the proposal. You may only speak once during a public hearing. Speaker shall address the board as a whole, shall not ask any verbal exchange back from the board. It's not the intent of public comment to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. There will be no discussions between speakers and members of the audience. All speakers are expected to observe decorum of the meeting, be respectful in your language presentation, refrain from use of profanity or shouting, or making any disclosed prohibited, any disclosures prohibited by the Personnel Act with respect to any county employee. All comments by the speaker shall be limited to the subject at the public hearing. The speaker must make all presentations from the podium provided, and shall not be allowed to physically approach the board or staff members without the express invitation by the chair or the designated presiding officer of the board. Any applause shall be held to the end of the public comment period.
All right. Mr. Easter.
Thank you, Chairman, Board. Tonight, I present zoning map amendment DC 24G8006. The applicant is Brad Ri. Yeah, Brad Ri, I'm sorry. The request is to rezone approximately three acres from residential agriculture and residential 20, R20, to highway business conditional. The property is located on Highway 801. The property is further described as Davie County Tax Parcel G8120A006. The land use plan identifies it as commercial. It's not in a watershed. The applicant is Brad Ri. The owner is Bailey &amp; Bailey Properties. The property size is 2.997 acres. The current land use is vacant. The proposed land use will be commercial. To the north of the property is residential commercial. It's zoned RA and R20. To the west of the property, it is residential zoned RA. To the south of the property, residential commercial. It's highway business conditional and R20. And to the east of the property is residential and commercial, and it's zoned CS, which is like a community shopping zoning district, and R20. As you can see in this, the land use identifies the area as commercial. The property was originally zoned as rule, I'm sorry, residential agriculture and residential 20 in 1973. The proposed zoning is a highway business conditional for the specific use of a building contractor general as identified in the zoning ordinance. The utilities will be private septic tank system and public water. As I said before, the Davie County Land Use Plan identifies this as commercial. The Davie County Growth Enhancement Strategy identifies this as a secondary growth area. The board can consider with this the specific use for a building contractor general. It is a, it is a conditional rezoning. So the board has three considerations to make. They can rezone with conditions. The conditions both have to be agreed upon by the applicant as well as the board. They can deny, or they can defer. On the January 23rd, 2024 Planning Board meeting, the Planning Board deferred it to the February 27th, 2024 meeting, and at that time, it was approved with additional conditions, the specific condition for the highway business with the conditional for the general contractor, and then also the Planning Board approved additional buffering and screening requirements for it. So at this time, I'd be more than happy to address any questions this board has.
Could you kind, if you don't mind, could, do you have, could you just kind of update the folks that are here and us what those conditions were?
Sure, sure, I can, I can. So with that, one condition, it is specific use is for highway business conditional, which is a general contractor. Okay, it's defined in the zoning ordinance. The applicant plans to operate an HVAC-type business out of the contract. That's the only use that can be on that property, which would be plumbing company, a general contractor, HVAC, something varies with that. And then also, the applicant requested or approved, the Planning Board approved, a buffer. They would do a, they're doing a type V buffer, which is, they're going to do a 20-foot of undisturbed area, and I think it's, it's what they proposed is in your packet. They're going to do a row of evergreen kophers, broadleaf placed in not more than five foot apart that grow height of six foot. Within two years, they're going to do an opaque fence as well, and then also, they're going to supplement feed with some low-grow evergreen shrubs. So that was what, based upon some of the concerns at the February meeting, I'm sorry, at the January meeting, the Planning Board approved those conditions at the February meeting with that.
Any other questions for Mr. Easter before we move into public?
Just to clarify something you said. You said they were planning to, they agreed to put up the opaque fence in two years?
No, 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 I'm sorry, apologize. The shrubs have to grow to that required height within two years. The opaque fence will have to go in at the time of the zoning approval before a CU is issued for the property. Yeah, apologize for that.
What is the remediation if the evergreens don't grow to that?
They have to meet that. If they don't during the whole process, they would have to add. Yeah. If they die or anything over the time, we know when we plant them, at that time, we can do, we can double-check behind them and make sure that they're, they're in compliance.
I got a question, but I'm not sure if this is for Johnny or someone else. The site that was picked, as far as the actual location of the building, is, is that set in stone or up for discussion?
That was not one of the conditions that the Planning Board approved. It was just the intended use and the supplemental added screening and buffering requirements.
Okay. And we can get to that, Brent, when we get to the, anything else?
I had one question, if you don't mind, Johnny. Once you take out the buffering around it, how much does that leave for the building and parking?
Um, that's subject to the applicant. They've already went through, from my understanding, they've already went through environmental health. So the septic tank system is already approved. So once the buffering's there, the location of the building, they would have to require, put that wherever the building goes. They couldn't encroach on the septic tank system, so they would have to place the building in that general area.
And you don't know that, was it 20-foot buffer?
Yes, it's a 20-foot buffer. That's what they, that's what-
Extends all the way around. You don't know how many square feet that comes up to?
No. I do know.
The proposed building is 10,000 feet?
Um, I think a remedial site plan is about, I think they put 100 by 100 on one of the site plans. Yeah.
And we don't have any schematics that would show where the proposed placement of the building is?
I think in one of the, in the staff report that was submitted in your packet, there's one that shows the buffering on it. I don't know that, that-
I'm trying to help Richard, maybe Richard's question. Okay.
It leaves, it leaves a substantial area. If you, if you want to.
So if you, well, initially, what they're looking to do is generally the location of the building will be something like this.
All right. Any other questions?
Just one comment. I think what you're talking with the 20-foot buffer all the way around it, you're probably talking about losing at least a half, if not three-quarters of an acre.
Somewhere thereabouts.
Buildable property.
Thereabouts.
And then 10,000 square foot building, 100, yeah, 100 by 100, 10,000 square foot building, you're looking at another quarter acre of, so that only leaves what, a couple of acre and a half, two acres for driveway and parking and everything outside. Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I will say that in your packet, and if we have the same page numbers, I think the answer to your question is on page 27. It has the picture of where the proposed building and parking is laid out.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, Mr. Easter? All right, Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The chair has announced this is the day and hour of the public hearing pursuant to North Carolina Chapter 160D of the General Statutes and also Chapter 155 Davie County Code of Ordinance for an Amendment for the Zoning Ordinance regarding Davie County Map G8120A006 located on NC Highway 801 South, consisting of approximately three acres from residential 20 and residential agriculture to highway business. There's been, do you notice, given percent to the requirements, North Carolina General Statutes and the Davie County Code of Ordinance by way of due publication of notice of the public hearing and a newspaper of general circulation in Davie County. The clerk to the board has attached an affidavit showing publication in said paper. I would ask all who wish to comment at this public hearing to come forward to the podium, state your name for the board, and then comment on the proposal. And, Mr. Chair, we have three individuals that signed up for the public hearing comment signup sheet, and I will just call you by name in the order in which you signed up. Sandra Moneyham- Sandra Moneyham.
Mooneyham.
Or Mooneyham?
I'm going to put something on the screen, please.
Is the IT person still on? Yeah. Probably will switch someplace. Come behind to you. Yeah. Commissioners, I have some.
Well, you know, we're.
You can use the same graphic. We don't want to delay with.
Yeah, we can use the same graphic if we need to, but.
If you flip those to page two.
My name is Sandra Mooneyham, and I'm here with my sister Tina Pryor. We are the James Sisters, and we, along with our mother Betty James, own the tract of land adjacent to the property where the commercial construction is being discussed. This land has been in our family for sixty years. We are here tonight to express that we are against this proposed construction. We're not against business. We're against business that is being put in the middle of residences. And that's what you see here. We own. We own, let me get a bear in charge, the start of this right here, all the way over, all the way down to here. We also own this tract of land here and this one here. That was all the original part of this land that our dad purchased. And like I said, all of that has been in our family for sixty years. And my sister lives there. She and her husband and myself and my husband live there. So we're very concerned about this tract of land that, as you see, runs along our property line. Our first reason for being against this construction is that we have an aquifer providing water to our well, and our groundwater must be protected. We are also, we also have natural springs on our land, and that we also do not want to be contaminated. Our well is located at the lowest spot to everything that is adjacent around it. When you stand at our well, you look up to every piece of property around us, including the land where this proposed construction is. Now, when they did their.
Works in the morning.
Okay. Now, when they did their perk testing, that, I don't know if it's going to show up on the screen. It doesn't show on the screen, though. So when they did their perk testing, they came out and they did their perk testing right here in our corner, right on the property lines. They did multiple perk testing right on that corner there. That's where the perk testing. Our well is not, is located just outside the tree line at the lowest part. So we feel that there is a potential that our groundwater source to our well will be affected by that septic system. The segregating that they've done based on the building location, the driveway, and then the parking, perk testing, we feel that there is a potential water source that they're having to maneuver around, such as a natural spring. We had a spring-fed creek that ran along the back of our property all while we were growing up. Now, it doesn't run today, but everybody keeps referring to it as a gully. We do, it wasn't a gully. It was a spring-fed creek. We feel that that water source is still there. It's just covered over by erosion, natural erosion. Now, everybody here knows about LeBlu, and LeBlu is sitting on a prime aquifer. And that aquifer, if anybody knows where LeBlu is, from the, where the crow, way the crow flies, it's literally just to hop over the woods from our property. And those aquifers and their veins, they run all through there and right along the back property of ours. And so we know how, how long LeBlu has been in business, so we know how deep and how strong these aquifers are. And they must be protected, not to mention the springs that go in our back property. into neighboring springs, creeks, aquifers, wells, et cetera. I have no clue. In fact, if Mr. Brad Ry is in this room, I wouldn't even know it. He's not approached us. He's not come to us. Not that he has to, but he's never come to us and talked to us. And us being the majority property owner beside him, you would think that that would have been the neighborly thing to do. Same as the person, the seller. You would think that we've known him all of his life, that he would have come to us and talked to us. Not that he has to, but that, that's the case here.
Contacted your daughter?
Our daughter is not a property owner, and let me just say that. So let me just say that this is not our first well. Our first well that our father put in was a concrete well, and it was actually pulled inside the ground due to the strength of the vein of that aquifer. And he had to reevaluate and dig another well to a weaker part of the vein, and that's where our well is located today. Now, Tina and I grew up on well water. And when county water came down our road, our daddy got a connect, he got a connection because it was cheaper to get the connection at that time than it was to hook onto it later on. However, he did not run county water to our home for many, many years. My father was a clever man. He was a master plumber. When he finally did run county water to the house, he put valves in our house, cutoff valves, and where he could switch our house from county water to well water at any time he wanted. And it turned out that county water was pretty expensive for water in his garden. So our daddy hooked up all the outside faucets to our home to well water. And that's how it remains today. So like I said, our father was a clever man. So here's the other thing that we do not agree with is secondary layer commercial construction surrounded by personal residences. This is spot zoning at its finest. If you approve this tonight, this will not only be a one-and-done, you know, this will be a precedent that you set for every resident of Davie County in a situation like ours. There is more than enough road frontage sites available for this business to purchase, and Mr. Ry already owns many. We, along with our husbands and neighbors, wholeheartedly agree with the research provided by Mr. Everett. Our land at the back of our property has already suffered from natural erosion. So to add unnatural erosion through water runoff from the building and parking surface at the rate stated by Mr. Everett, which we agree with, will cause damages to our property with no accountability or damages held against the owner of the property. I am a licensed pesticide dealer in the state of North Carolina. So water runoff and contamination of groundwater, lakes, ponds, streams, et cetera, is part of my training. It doesn't just apply to pesticides. Refrigerant oils and other contaminants, for example, could leak out of those old units while they're accumulated waiting disposal. Mr. Everett has already shown pictures of how they accumulate rapidly at their other location. So on side notes, we heard a little bit tonight about buffering, you know, I didn't hear anything about silt screening. We heard a little bit about landscape plans, but I hadn't seen anything. I haven't seen any renderings or anything like that. We haven't seen anything to show what it's going to look like, nothing. You know, I feel for the Everets. You know, that land's been in their family ju, just as long as it's been in ours. And, and so here's my thing is, would this be approved in Oak Valley? Would this be approved in Greenwood Lakes or Covington Creek? It wouldn't. It wouldn't. Well, just because we don't live in a subdivision, doesn't make us any different. We're all neighbors. We just happen to own a little more property than the people in those subdivisions. But we're the same. We are the same. So we are against it, and we really appreciate you having us here. And we ask, don't make us live under these circumstances. Please don't put this in our backyard, and please vote no. Thank you.
You could, if you could hold your applause till the end. Jody Everett?
Back again, three-month streak, I guess. So I'm going to back up just for a second. Ms. Pryor, Ms. Mooneyham hit several of the points I'm going to hit. I'm not going to try not to take too long tonight. Most of what I'm going to be covering, I sent to you guys an email, I think, middle last week. You got probably most of the detail there. But I do want to share tonight some of the pictures, you know, give some, some visualizations of some of the things behind that. So we're going to get back to this picture in a moment, but that's, you know, just to hit Ms. Mooneyham's point a little bit. This is one of the earlier iterations of all-phase air deacon HVAC. There's been some transition there, but this is a great example. I don't think Mr. Ry necessarily owns this particular building. I think Mr. Strange still retains ownership. I can't speak for the entire property, but I do know the part to the left there is still clearly visible from Conans Road as you drive by. You can just see just a mass of rusting units leaking who knows what into the ground. I do want to talk just a little bit about this particular site. I think this gives a good overview here. Hopefully, I can see my notes. Aren't great. Just a little bit about this, this graphic. Mr. Poindexter, you asked about the position of the building on the, on the property. I mean, quite honestly, had this site been proposed up along eight oh one, I wouldn't even be here. I spoke in favor of the parcel in green. I think most of you will remember me, three of you will remember me at least from fighting Dollar General pretty hard quite a few years ago. I think I filled your email inboxes on a daily basis with the petitions. After Dollar General went away, actually worked with Mrs. Bale, she's in the, in the audience here tonight, and her husband, Rising Concepts, spoke in support of that. So I'm not, I'm not anti-business by any means, but, you know, along, along the highways, where it's appropriate is one thing. Back in the woods, where's this proposed site, the blue block, that's not just the site, and that's an estimation of, Mr. Poindexter, to your, to your statement, you know, that's, that's the building and parking area, just rough dimensions from the site plan that was provided. The yellow lines on, on the, on the drawing there, that's, all this data is straight off the Davie County Rock Maps tax site. So the yellow lines, and Ms. Mooneyham, I'm going to call it a gully again because in my lifetime, I have had that. She's actually correct, though. It is, it is a spring-fed area. The spring actually emerges on my property. Ms. Finney came out, and I got a little nervous because she got pretty close to the edge. We're going to look at some pictures of that in a few minutes. But just off the left edge, or actually just right on the, on the edge there, you can see the lines. Can I flip to the screen for just a second? Is that? Okay. You'll notice the lines here, and one thing that's interesting, you see everything along eight oh one, along female, you'll see the elevation lines, these are photography lines, the yellow lines are ten-foot fall lines, the green dashes in between are two-foot fall lines. What that means is from my parents' house right here on eight twenty-two, my mother-in-law's property here that my daughter and her husband now live in, here at one oh eight Southers Lane, there's about a twenty-foot fall down here to the middle of that property. There's two, one, two, three. You see, it starts to go on pretty quickly. Ms. Mooneyham was, was pointing out that, that old spring originated somewhere. You can see the darker areas on the, on the aerial photos as well. I think that's part of the reason here that the site is so much shoved into this corner, septic field up here in this, in this portion. Even, even on this portion of that land, the gully's pretty deep. It continues on down. You see the V shapes here progressing off to the lower left-hand side. You see, they get really tight right here. Finney, that right in there is probably about where you just fell in, about a twenty-foot drop back there. We're going to talk more about water here in just a second. But you notice all the other properties, elevations along the road. This property, there's about sixty-foot of road frontage there, ten to twenty-foot wide drive, drive along the upper edge here. That building, probably somewhere an acre-ish of hard pack that's going to go in on what was, or what is today, you know, permeable water. And, and on the waterfront, water has to go someplace. That, that three-acre property, you can see that V shape. It all drains, and it drains quickly. It's down to the lower left-hand corner of that drawing. You can see the blue arrow there across the, across, it drains there today. I know it does. I'm not asking to do anything about that. That's just nature, and that's part of the, the topography. What's not natural, and even with the current zoning, what wouldn't be natural if someone were to put a house there, is one acre of hard pack and permeable on the land positioned right against the neighboring properties. You can see the blue arrow there. Water would rapidly fall, or rapidly flow across the James property that the two sisters own, straight on to my corner there. That, that segment there with the house on it, that's a life estate for my parents, Joe and Eva, peppered there in the audience. But just a little bit about the, you know, the water. In an average year in Davie County, we get forty-three inches of rain. As you guys probably well know, we've had a much wetter-than-average spring. So I don't know how many inches we've had this, this spring alone. I think we're four to five inches above average for the year. A one-inch rainfall on that approximately one acre of hard pack that Mr. Ry is, is planning to implement produces, you can see the top table there, twenty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-five gallons of water. How much is that? Think about a jug of water, a jug of milk in the, in the, in the grocery store. Twenty-four thousand gallons is about one-point-three residential swimming pool, sixteen by thirty-two by five. In the course of a year, just on that hard pack, that number's highlighted in yellow, approximately one million seven hundred and twenty-two thousand gallons of water are going to flow across Ms. Mooneyham, Ms. Pryor's property, straight on to mine, back into the ditch. We're going to look at some pictures here in a minute. We've already been in contact with North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. We've looked at some of the legal precedents as there and have some options. But, you know, at this point, if, if this moves forward, we're going to have no other option but to pursue legal action against Mr. Ry and his builder and any other parties that are appropriate. Here's a little bit of context, and I'll, I'll speed up from here, hopefully. You can see here, the picture on the left, this is just below the proposed build site that we had, so just to the bottom of that previous slide that I had here in the direction of that, of that blue arrow. You can see there, just, you know, it's just leaves and stuff flowing down through. What you can't see, and I think, I know several of you guys were able to come out on site. Ms. Finney, okay, Ms. Finney, I think the, the red circle there on the right, that's my wife and dog standing there, thinking that same general area where I said, don't get too close, right? About a twenty-foot fall down. My wife's five foot five, I'm six foot three, standing there. You can see that the, just below my wife there is actually where the water does come out of. It was flowing hard today. I could put video out, but I'm not going to take that time. You also see the huge pile of sand. This is from the natural runoff on the area. Imagine taking an, an entire acre out, accelerating it, and then pumping it across us every time it rains. I, I don't intend to be Mr. Ry's silt provider. There's no provisions in the, in the current documentation about raising, I raised that with the, with the Planning Board. There was no. raising. I raised that with the, with the planning board. There was no consideration given there.
One question. No consideration given of what?
I raised the concern around groundwater runoff in, in the January 23 meeting. The motion was deferred. They came back. They showed some pictures of some, I don't know, 15 to 20-foot Leland Cypress, and Mrs. Grub told me that the, that they had closed public comments. Mrs. Grub told me that the, our, our concerns had been addressed, and they made the motion to, to-
What did you ask for?
I, I asked for consideration of the groundwater runoff in that planning board committee.
Did, did you ask for some sil-
I, I asked about silt control. They, they had some internal discussion in that meeting about, you know, I think Ms. Grub actually questioned whether or not they could do some silt ponds and whatever on site. They had some internal discussion there that wasn't for the public, so I don't know what was discussed after that. In the second meeting, where it was, they made the motion to approve, there was no discussion of that. The only thing that changed from the first meeting to the second meeting was Mr. Ry's addition of some pictures of some tall Cypress trees that apparently are only gonna be six feet tall.
In your, in your opinion, that would, that would help?
Mr. Jones, if this, if this site was up there along the highway, and they could control the water and, and control their, the visibility of the site, I wouldn't be here tonight. I said that. I asked Mr. Ry in the hallway, "After that, can you not move the site?" I understand there's limitations. There's a reason why that property hasn't been utilized for many, many years.
Okay, go ahead. That's, yeah.
Yeah. This is the same view, looking back down. You can see the, the red circle there on the left. That's me standing there, six foot three. The dog's on the edge, about 20 feet above. This, this massive gully, that's where the, the springs do come back out. That's flowing water right there. That's probably somewhere around 75 to maybe 100 yards at most from the corner of the, of the property that's outlined in blue with no, absolutely no means to control. The, the build site is in the absolute worst location on the lot from a water standpoint that it possibly could be.
Is that, is that ravine on the proposed property or the adjoining property?
It's, um- That ravine is about the tip of the blue arrow. You can see how the V get really tight together to start right here. That's-
So it's not on the property in question?
Not on the property itself.
I thought so, 'cause, 'cause I was, I was walking the property today, and I didn't find it. So I'm, right.
I should've gotten you some information out ahead of time. But yeah, it's, it's over to the corner there. Granted, you saw the pathway that sort of went down. It goes there and crosses over down onto our property there. Covered that one. Covered that one.
Got a general mathematical question here, and I don't wanna this be perceived as a terse comment, but with, where is the one acre of surface coming up with in the context of a 10,000-square-foot building? I can't tell how big the parking lot looks. It looks a little smaller than 10,000 square foot. So, you know, 'cause I know that together, 'cause an acre's 43,560 square feet, so.
Yeah. If you measure this out on Google Earth, I'm assuming from the stakes, you probably saw the orange stakes around on the property today, that's roughly what I'm trying to show here. 20-foot buffer around there, some six-foot trees apparently. We'll get to that in a minute. It's, it's positioned here because now the drop starts on that side. I think they've, they've got some choices. They could potentially put it up here, which is actually higher ground, so I guess they're gonna pump their 70 uphill back to the 70 yards. So I guess they could put plot there. Maybe they could work with Mr. Bale and position it up here, works more out of sight. I don't know. Like I said, it wasn't, if it was up here in, in the original zoning, in the landlord meetings, they talked about highway business. There's 60 feet of highway up there. I stood at this corner this afternoon, and I could barely see cars going by. So, uh-
But will somebody in the presentation or anybody in the future answer exactly how much hard pack surface or permit, whatever the term is that we're gonna have?
I, I can only give you an estimate. I know 100 by 100 would be approximately half an acre.
No, 100 by 100 would be a quarter of an acre, less than a quarter of an acre. I don't know. Please do not take that. I just, I just wanna make sure we're, I wanna make sure that we're accurately describing whatever we're talking about tonight.
You know, 10, 10 to 20 feet of roadway across the, the length of the property, the 100 by 100 hard pack building, the, you know, the parking area, that's what I'm calling the impermeable surface. I'm, I'm totally willing to concede it may not be quite an acre. It may be a little bit more, it may be a little bit less, but it's still significant. All right. One acre would produce that 1.3 swimming pools or 24,000 gallons. I mean, it's just simple math. You know, it's a matter of, let's say it's half that, 10,000 gallons in a year, okay? Or, or 1 million gallons in a year versus almost 2 million gallons in a year. Still a significant amount of water that's jettisoning itself right across our property in each and every rain event. Moving on to appearance, noise, and lighting. Like I said, the site is actually not along the highway. It was, it was up along that 60 feet, or if it's up even closer to the highway where the Rising Concepts building is, wouldn't be here. Mr. Bale's been doing a very nice job of, of maintaining that property once we supported that. I don't have any doubt that Mr. Ry might make every attempt to do that, but once it's rezoned, there's no guarantee. And there's, there's a pattern here with this particular business that I'm gonna show here in a minute. You know, trust me is not good enough for me. I mean, I just, I don't have any other choice. So you've got the building, from an appearance standpoint, you've got the building itself, not opposed to metal buildings. My parents live in a metal building. We've got a metal workshop. I'm sure Mr. Shelton could build a very nice-looking building. I'm concerned about dumpsters and the whole air conditioner graveyard that we saw in the, in the initial pictures. I, I am concerned about 100 by 100 building. That's significantly larger than any of the, any of the other buildings around the area. You know, the, the talk about it, it's, it's a, it's a workshop or contractor's building. Mr. Ry indicated in the first planning meeting that his intent was to use it to consign air conditioner units so that he could service, service units without having to make the call. Your air conditioner goes down, he's got them on stock in hand, so I think that's part of the reason for the unusually large building. I think it's two, at least twice as big as the current facility, from what I can tell just measuring on, on the internet. These are views of the proposed site from 108 Sowers Lane. My mother-in-law, Gay Sowers, owns, owns that property. My daughter and her husband, Caleb and Meredith Fowler, just moved back from Raleigh after, after, living there briefly after college, just moved back. This is the view standing in their yard at the, at the corner. All these trees would be gone for that, for that site. Again, we're at that extreme edge. And the appearance, we, we understand the appearance is more of an issue for the 108, 110 properties. Here's the view of 110 Sowers Lane from inside the footprint, inside of the footprint of the proposed building. The first picture there on the left, the trees that you can actually see there blocking, that are, I guess, gonna be left. Actually, I own, I think I own those. It's an old fence line there. If you look back to historical photos from the 60s, it's the furthest back I could find. That whole area was in, in pretty heavy timber, even back to 1964 on the aerial photos. It's never been used for anything.
You're saying that's the state here, except for you said I'm likely gonna go back to right here in the photo.
It's, it's in that corner, Sandra. Yeah, so just-
I'd like to remind everybody that comments come from the podium, not from out in the audience.
Yeah, so that, that back, that back stake, the, in pink, you can just barely see it. I'm gonna try to mouse over it here, right in this area. I think that is the, the back property line where the Everets meet, the Jameses meet the Baileys here. Opens up and goes. The picture on the right is actually from the furthest stake of the building. I think you can maybe just see it there. Again, on that flatter section of land there, all these trees will go away for the proposed site. So you can, even, even now, you can still clearly see 110 Sowers Lane there in the, in the background. I don't think six-foot tree that's set, you know, 20-foot below grade of those, of those properties on Sowers Land's gonna do much to screen. Here you can see, to my six-foot comment, you can actually see there, there's a medium-sized Kubota tractor sitting just on the edge of the property, looking at it from 110 Sowers Lane. I think it's visible in the, in the picture to the right. I can't see. It's gotten a little smaller. But you can see there, my parents' house sits 50, 60 yards off the property line. The tractor's sitting either in the parking lot or inside of the building. I'm not sure about the exact location, but tractor tire's about six feet tall on the top, so I guess the trees would cover the top of a tractor tire. Which is, I, I was a little surprised to hear that, quite honestly, because what we were shown in the, in the second planning meeting that we didn't get to speak at was, you know, 15 and 20-foot tall Leland Cypress, which I think's still in your pocket. So, you know, my, my main concern is once this goes, if it goes, we're done. We don't have any control. There's no enforcement. Even, even 20 or 30-foot Leland Cypress takes about 16 years to mature. My parents love them to death, but they're in their 70s. Don't think it's gonna be a while, even if they put some Leland Cypress in there. Another view from 110 Sowers Lane, back patio there. You saw the, the screened-in porch in previous pictures. Literally, that whole block of woods would be gone there. The building would be just literally right, right across into those. There's the property line, and I guess we could leave some of the trees there and some of the briars that grow up there. But, you know, we'd be looking at this at least nine to 10 months of the year. Oops, sorry. Just appearance, noise, and lighting. In the initial proposal, the evergreen trees, the fence, none of that was, was mentioned. It was gonna be a 20-foot buffer. Still not sure where that lands, if that's enforceable or not. Here's, here's the initial trees that were proposed to be left. We own a good portion of those there in the middle. Property line sort of meanders down through there. It doesn't exactly follow the grass line. I, I'm sorry for taking so long, but. Appearance, noise, and lighting. Again, this is, I believe this is Mr. Strange's original location of all-phase. Apparently, Mr. Ry has bought out parts of the assets. I don't know. There was a sign out on this facility on Crenshaw Road just in the last couple of weeks about free pallets. I don't know if there, there's vehicles parked there. I don't know if they're transferring units there. The, the top-down view, that's from the Davie Tax Map site. Like I said, I don't know the, the units there in the middle. I don't know the status of those, but I can say for sure the ones along the left-hand edges, we're looking at it right now, are still there. You can drive by them. I drove by them on the way here. You can see there, that, that is the current picture on the right. That's the view from the road. Does that make sense? The top-down, top-down side-in. You know, there, there's just no amount of fencing or screening or anything that's gonna take that out of our view. You saw from the topography, we're, we're 20, 20 to 25 feet. All, all the surrounding neighbors are 20 to 25 feet above the proposed site. It's literally built in a hole. We're all, we're, we will all be looking at it. This is the current site. Mr. Ry does definitely for sure operate out of this location. I believe it's a leased rented, and I'm not sure. It's, he's not the listed owner there. But back when we were going through the planning board section, I, I could actually see this from our, from my parents' backyard as well. It's about two, I think, 250 yards across 801. Clearly visible, no fencing, no screening. Again, to my concern about these general types of business, you know, once they're in, there's nothing to prevent anybody from doing this. You see there, the picture on the top left, 115, 119, one dumpster's gone. The other one beside of it's full. 123, that's an eight-day period. There's two dumpsters back. There's a, looks like some of the scrap metal there. Now, I will say, I don't see the scrap metal at this particular site, but there's nothing in the zoning that would prevent that from being there. Availability of other sites. I know the, the county does try to, to condense commercial properties in, in the planned areas, just big, big tracks off 601 in Moxville, some other large areas around the Bermuda Run, 801, 158 interchange. Mr. Ry actually owns one property. I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, but I think Phil and Chad Fuller are building some properties just beside of Hillsdale Methodist. Mr. Ry owns five acres there, already, already zoned appropriately. Gray Shicks Road, I think it was Robertson's property originally. Asked about that in the, in the planning boards, and basically the response, or my interpretation of his responses was, he didn't wanna do what it took to run the business in Bermuda Run. That's, that's a red flag for me. If he doesn't wanna do it there, do it right there, why is he gonna do it right down in our backyard? There's an additional 1.91 acres that's current, that's the current operations. I don't know if he's got opportunities for expansion there. But again, he's already here. I mean, it's not an, it's not a situation where we're trying to lure new business into the county. We're talking about a business that's already been here for 15, 15 years? 10, 15 years? I don't know, Mr. Strange. Mr. Ry owns that. There's 3.7 acres at the intersection of Hillcrest, and Hillcrest and 801, the board may remember that. That actually came up in August of 2022, and at the time, Dr. Browder, the dentist in advance, owned the property adjacent to that on Pond Lane, and spoke at this very podium in opposition to that. That was when Jake Miller was trying to put his, his tree service business there. Since that time, apparently, Mr. Ry has purchased that and also purchased Mr. Browder's location on Pond Lane. So, you know, if he's, if he's not opposed to it, he could probably get that rezoned. The board, the planning board had already approved that. I think this board deferred it due to some general highway business zoning versus a conditional. But that's, that's certainly up. I don't, I don't know what happened with that one. I think Jake just withdrew the, the application. There's the 0.7 acres off of Crenshaw Road that we've already seen some pictures of. I think Mr. Strange apparently retained ownership of that. I'm not sure what their, what their situation is, but, I mean, that might be a potential for him. And then I've already mentioned, Mr. Ry owns that 50-acre track off Pond Lane. Again, not anti-business. I think there's some amount of land, certainly 50 acres would qualify. You know, probably more than five, less than 100 in that neighborhood, where if you wanna go and do something on that land, I would fully support you doing Traffic. I'm, I'm almost done. Traffic, this was one of the major concerns when we looked at the Dollar General on the same exact, the, the Dollar General was just to the right of that red line on there. We had some significant concerns with the commercial traffic going in and out of there, the delivery trucks, et cetera. The yellow line is 801. Towards the top of the screen is the fire department, country store, Shady Grove towards the bottom of the screen, Ellis Middle School and Fork. The line to the left in purple is Feed Mill Road, significant residential area. Line to the top coming in, into the center is Underpass Road, also significant residential area. The line to the right is one side of Peoples Creek. I think everybody's familiar with that, another very significant residential area. Everything in a curve, and Mr. Ry is proposing this warehouse facility, the red line would be an approximation of the driveway there in that, in that 60 feet of road frontage. So you've got 100 by 100 warehouse that's got to be filled. You've got, assuming he takes the trash off-site, you've got at least three dumpsters in the current location that need to come and go multiple times a week, apparently with the volume. You've got a fleet of somewhere five to 10 trucks, I'm assuming, and all going into an area that's already a little bit of a confusing area. You can see the little black tick marks. Those are private driveways off of Feed Mill, 801, et cetera, there. Finally, last point, damage to surrounding property values. We've already talked about the appearance. I have absolutely no, no way to determine an exact dollar figure, but I can tell you for sure if what's on the pictures beside of that text goes in beside of us, and, and the erosion that we've already talked about goes in behind us, there's no way we're not taking a significant hit to every resident that adjoins this property, even the, even the current commercial residences. And again, you know, back to that picture. That is all that I had. I don't know if you've got any questions for me. Happy to answer them. Do appreciate your time. Sorry to take so long. I won't be here next month. I don't wanna make it four in a row. Thank you.
Who else do we have?
Last one that signed up was Ashley Everett.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Everett, proud wife of that man right there. And if you wanna blame it for being long, it's my fault. This is my family's land. So I just wanna- just want to give you the perspective from my family. I grew up in Davie County on that property, and I returned to build a life here as soon as I was able after graduating from college, simply because this is where I wanted to make my home for the rest of my life. In the last couple of years, as I've driven around the county, I've seen an interesting sign that says, "Don't change Davie County, let Davie County change you." Well, that's what my family is fighting for. Jody has just shown you in very meticulously researched detail how all of our properties will be adversely affected by a 100-by-100 square foot warehouse right beside our property line. Now, I know you remember the picture, it literally was right there beside the backyard. That was the very reason that we invited members of the planning committee to come visit the site, so they could see with their own eyes how completely inappropriate this one-acre wooded lot was for an HVAC facility. I was very disheartened that only one member of the planning committee came to see it, but he was the one person who voted against it, because he did see that this was not an appropriate spot for a warehouse. One other member after the meeting said that he didn't need to come see it, because he passed by it every day, but in truth, the only thing he passed by was the road where the drive to the facility was located, he never saw down into the woods, he has no idea what it looks like down there. But right now, I want to thank Mr. Barnett, Mr. Chef, Ms. Finney, and any of you who had the opportunity to come and actually see the site, see how it's located next to my family's land, I appreciate that so very much. And I'm certain that you saw with your own eyes that this place in the woods is no place for a business of any kind, and especially not an HVAC facility with all its scrap metal waste. I know that you know it's part of your elected duty to help our county prosper by growing suitable businesses and the county tax base, but it's also part of your elected duty, the reason I voted for y'all, to help keep Davie County retain its rural character and its charm through responsible zoning. Mr. Rye is already operating a business in our county, as Jody lets you know, he's already here, he's already adding to our tax base, and by using properties that he already owns, he has the ability to expand his business as he desires. So the bottom line is this, Mr. Rye, the members of the zoning committee, nor you, will have to live with an HVAC facility in your backyards. You'll never have to see it, because it won't be on the highway for you to see, and Mr. Rye will get the opportunity to leave at the end of his workday and go to his house, which is not located next to the facility. The people who have to live with this monstrosity are the ones who live right by it, and we are the ones who will have to deal with the environmental and the financial fallout if this plot of land is rezoned. So, I thank you for taking time to hear my concerns, and I urge you to vote against it and allow the natural area that's there to remain peaceful and untouched as it has been for almost a century. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that is all that's signed up, I don't know if you want to open it up to any of the others?
Anyone? Please.
I'm Steve Strange, I own the property on Carnation Road. I don't talk in front of people, I fix air conditioners, and that's what he does. And so, we don't, didn't spend a lot of time getting stuff together and coming up with, there should maybe some water here, there may be, that's what I heard a lot of, but I hate that my property, which is mine, and those pictures are old, very old from the sky, because those, that equipment rotates out of there, and that equipment has bought daughters' cars, it has bought, paid rent payments for my daughters, where when it got slow, we would go tear that stuff apart, and where it all sits, you can't see it unless you go on private property. I mean, the picture, if you see the picture, it is from private property where he took the pictures, and...
Again.
So, the, um, the units we take refrigerant out of, we let them sit there, we tear them apart, we turn them in the right way, yes, sometimes they sit there a long time, but it's because I'm working, it's not because I'm trying to damage anything, it's because I'm taking care of other people's stuff, you know? What, that place was a repo yard, and none of my neighbors have ever said anything about it, they were very happy it become an HVAC place. Mr. Rye's, our agreement, when it was said, was I had sixty days to clean it up, because he was gonna rent my building. He said he could not have it that way. Sixty days, and I could show you the contract if I need to bring that, but then, instead of having two buildings that he was trying to work out of, he had already rented the other one, he said, "I tell you what, why don't you make plans to rent yours, and I'll just move back over to that building and get two roll-offs, and I'll just let them pick it up every time it gets full," and that's what happens there, you know, and I, you know, so I can't, I can't speak to how much water's gonna run, or none of that, but I can tell you that for eighteen years, nobody said anything about me having a bad mess at our property, but we did pay a lot of taxes, we employed a lot of people, we kept everybody working through COVID, and we did a lot for Davie County in that way, and if Davie County called, we ran to those calls, and I'm sure it'd be the same way. But if you will, don't hold my property against him, because it won't be the same way, he gets it going when it comes around. Thank you.
Yes?
My name is Joe Everett, I live at 110 Sowers Lane, the property that will be looking at this if it happens, Mr. that just spoke, I'm sorry, I'm, okay, he said those pictures were taken from his property, no, they were taken from 801, I mean, from Carnation Road, they were taken from Carnation Road, as we came here today, coming down Carnation Road, we could still see that yard full of those units. We don't want this in our backyard, if you approve this zoning, there'd be nothing to stop that from happening, we can't take the word, because I've just heard something tonight that wasn't right just a minute ago, because I know what I saw on the way here, and we do not want that in our backyard, or right against our backyard. I'd appreciate if you'd vote to just not to approve this, thank you.
Sure.
Brad Rye, good afternoon, thank you all guys for seeing us, so, I am like Steve, the watershed, we will trust the contractor, Mrs. Shelton, to make sure that we are doing everything to protect the area. I do want to address a couple of the concerns, in the planning meeting, I explained our background and how we ended up here, and I don't want to regurgitate all of that, but we ran a business for roughly eight years, we have never processed scrap, it was just not something that I felt that was the right thing to do, there are companies now that will take these units to scrap yards and they process them for us. The land that Steve has, through being introduced to him through Davie Construction, you know, when I met Steve, we kicked it off, and I just said, "Bud, you know, if we do this, we've got to clean up the property, that's just not a good presentable way to run a business." So, they shared with you guys some pictures of the current location, we don't have a fence now, because it's not my property, it is, it was Mr. Mos's, now it's, I can't think of Johnny's last name, the gentleman across the street just bought it from him, we just had to sign a new lease. We discussed a ten-foot fence, and I apologize, if y'all don't have the packet, I can give her a thumb drive, we can pull all this up, the spruce pines are, I think, six-foot going in, and they grow two-foot a year, if that's my understanding, again, I'm not a landscaping guy, but my parents' house have these beside them, they're thirty or forty-foot tall. The hollies, we're gonna go on the left and the right, and there is a fence that will block the two dumpsters, so, guys, we do not scrap equipment, I understand the concerns from the property owners. I'll address the Bermuda Run, it is a metal building, we run a heat and air business, the requirement for brickside building, I turned that into a massive investment, and I think that property will probably serve something, something better, so I've actually got a request from Dollar General to take that, that would probably serve a better place over there with all the new homes that are being across, built right across the street from it. So, Jody was correct with that, it didn't make sense, it turned into several million dollars to go to property, and at the end of the day, we do run a service business, the 10,000-square-foot building, I'm okay to adjust that, but with our previous building, we had 10,000 square feet, and having the ability to consign flex, boots, equipment, supplies, gives us the ability to serve our community a little more effectively, so it worked, so, I'm not trying to create something new, I'm just trying to duplicate what we had, and if it tells you a little bit about us, I mean, Ace Hardware bought our business, so, we run a customer service-focused industry, you know, we will be very helpful in the community, I'm happy to answer any questions, but, and Mr. Shelton's here, if y'all want to talk about the water, I would just be BS, and if I tried to tell you where the water was going, so I'm not a grading guy, and I don't quite understand all the ins and outs of water.
Of course, you do understand their concern.
Yes, sir.
You're coming up against the property lines, and you do, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question that I would like to ask if I could, would there be a problem with you if we were to put a stipulation on it that said no outdoor storage of materials?
Is the forty-yard dumpster okay?
The dumpsters are outside storage, aren't they?
Well, it's, it's not what I would call it, storage, as in in the yard.
So the dumpsters, you can have those at, you know, the six-foot height, they make an eight-foot height, so, and guys, if y'all have ever dealt with recycle, as soon as I see it full, I call Triad, normally within 24 to 48 hours, they come swap it out, so the one picture he took, he must have been standing there when it was getting swapped, because typically, they bring one, they unload it, they grab one, and then they slide the other one in, so we have one trash dumpster and one metal dumpster, so, material outside, never, a dumpster outside, I mean, we kind of need that, so...
You know, most businesses anymore have a fence around the dumpster.
It's in, so the building, and there's a fence area where it's gonna sit in, so I don't, and I felt like that had been proposed to y'all, so there is, I don't know if I can get that picture back up, but where the building's sitting to the right of it is a small parking lot, that is fence where the dumpsters are gonna sit in, so we talked about this at the last meeting, so, a ten-foot fence behind it, I even saw somewhere on his presentation, he wanted a twenty-foot fence, I mean, we want to, we are not trying to upset anybody, it's a good location for this community to service out of, we are happy to make adjustments on the buffer stuff, if they don't feel like that we provided what the planning board asked us to do, I felt like we did, so, I don't believe they're gonna see the dumpsters, I can certainly appreciate the concern from the prior all-phase and how it was done, and I'll be honest, we, that's how seventy or eighty percent of heat and air companies run, they do scrap them, and they use it for busy work, for the downtime for their employees, which makes good sense. I did something a little opposite, I did new construction, so in our downtime, we always have houses to trim or houses to rough, and that was how I fed my downtime, so, if anybody knows anything about heat, there's no money on new construction of heat and air, so it is busy work, but it is good filler work to feed the families that work for you. So, it's one of two options, you either scrap equipment, or you jump into the new construction game, and a new construction game is hard, just because there's fifteen to twenty touches on a house, that when you quote it, you typically are gonna go rough it, and you're gonna trim it, well, it just doesn't run that smoothly, so our solution in the prior business was to do new construction, which we are doing here.
So just briefly, you would then be agreeable to Richard's suggestion about outdoor storage, as added to a stipulation, a stipulation, in, yes, okay, so we're noting that...
Question I got about the, when I'm looking at my packet, for clarification's sake, is the, this picture here, is that the fencing around the...
That was an example.
No, but I mean, is that an example of the fencing that would go around the dumpster area?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought, I just...
Okay, is it, is that, is that it, Brent?
That's the rest of that question.
I think Mr. Shelton was gonna come up and make a comment, unless anybody else has any questions for Mr. Rye.
I have a question, though.
Go ahead.
Would you be open to moving the site further away, I walked it, the site further away from the property line of the property, Mr. Everett's property on Sowers Lane, like moving it further into the property? I know there's some possible grading issues there, but, you know, even thirty, forty feet or something like that, would that be possible?
I defer that, I'll let Khan answer that question, I mean, I'm okay to shrink the building a little bit, but...
I'm not so much saying shrink your building, and I don't want to get in the middle of that, but like, just moving it from the property line.
Let Mr. Shelton...
Yeah.
Before Khan comes up, my question, truthfully, is, of all the places in the county, and all the places you already own, why would you choose this location in the middle of all these homes?
This was actually the first location I looked at when we got here, with Mr. Bailey and Ms. Browder, so she's the one that showed it to me, and then we saw the other location, not being from the community, not going everything here, I'm being honest with you, I felt like that would probably be a better location for the building for traffic, but after getting into the design of the building site, and I am being, to have a metal building with four brick sides on it, I mean, there was a million dollars in brick, there was almost a million dollars in grading on the other property, it was just not a good financial decision, so I think that probably serves more as a professional footprint, or either something like a retail that's gonna have a ton of traffic, we're not gonna have it, I mean, there's, I mean, he actually, there's eight or ten vans, we leave in the morning, we're back by five, there are no lights on the back of the building, so, this was just a, I feel like it's a better property, I operate a hundred yards from it currently, so I'm right on the other side of 801.
Yes, but where you are currently is not surrounded very closely by homes, so...
I mean, there's two homes.
And I'm assuming that most of these trees are going to go, have to be taken down to build your driveway, so a lot of that, a lot of the trees and natural erosion protection will be destroyed in order for you to get in there where you're going.
I'll let him answer that, just to make sure that you're getting accurate, but my understanding is the driveway, that there is a, there is a higher level of grade on this right-hand side, this is why the driveway's there, where there'll have to be some backfill there to make the driveway perfect, yes, but my understanding, and Khan, please answer if I'm speaking incorrectly here, but yes, right here at the property, there will be some trees, but our plan is to cut enough to run the sewage lines, the fill lines, and leave the rest of it, so that, I mean, that is, has been our discussion, and again, I'll let Mr. Shelton answer that question.
Khan, Shelton, Shelton Construction, a lot of talk about erosion control, if this goes through, we'll be disturbing right out an acre, so in commercial construction, it's not unusual to hire a civil engineer, he'll do the layout, which will be an erosion control plan, it'll be submitted to the state of North Carolina, NCDQ, and it would have to be approved by them, and then it would be up to us to implement that and put all the erosion control measures into place.
Okay.
So, an acre is always the key number when you're looking at erosion, so the site would be civil design, where the runoff would be considered and maintained on the property.
So a plan would go to the state, that's my term, not yours, to the state, they would approve the plan, and then you would implement what the state has?
Right, we'd hire a civil engineer, which we, you know, we have a civil engineer on other projects now, he would draw up a proposed plan to meet the state specifications, submit it to the state, make any changes that they recommend, and then send it back, stamped, approved, and then we're ready to submit it to the county to buy the building permits. It's not like a residential site where you can just get a dozer out there and go to work, it's a very long, expensive process.
Okay. Michelle, could you address Brent's question?
So, that's the most level area of the whole property, you look at a building that's 120... 120 by 80 feet, we can always adjust those numbers of the building. You have parking. Brad was gracious enough to go ahead and fence in 10 foot fence, the entire area of where the parking and the building's going to be. Screen it and then do a buffer of trees all the way around it. And then we are going to pump the subject to the opposite side of the property. We had the health department out. We've, you know, went through protocol and that was the side that they felt like had the most suitable soil. Now, it's a small leach field and it's only 300 linear feet. It's a business, not like a home. So I trust our officials here at the health department to make the right decision and that's what they came up with.
But I mean, any possible movement of, you know, even if it's 20, you know, 20, 30, I'm just thinking of anything that would allow for some type of extra border zigzagging or, you know, spacing it to go down that area.
Anything's possible with grading. It would cost Brad some money to move it forward. There is a really bad ravine there in the middle. It's not going to be disturbed. It's, it's pretty wet down in there. I imagine it probably stays wet. If we can hold it to the side of it and maybe encroach 10, 15 feet, I would not be opposed to doing that. But it, it, it would cost more money, but it sounds like Mr. Rye's open to it.
So to be clear, you have situated the building, I'm going to call it to the sou- southernmost point of that. It is situated.
Yes.
It is situated.
Yes.
So to Mr. Shelton's point, if you went 20, 30 feet north, you would, you could do that if you didn't get into the wet area. But obviously that would be a engineered issue if you decided to do that.
Right. That's right. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I will say, Mr. Rye, to your point that you're hearing a lot of what ifs and maybes, I also hear that from your side. I mean, that's my feeling as well because you're not giving us definite. You're saying maybe and what if, and we'll have to do this and we'll have to see. So that is alarming to me.
Is there a specific that I can answer for you?
Well, it, any of it. I mean, you, you, until you get in there and get your engineer in there and get him in there, you don't know definite. You don't know definite anything just, I mean, you're, because you're saying you're going to have to get somebody in there to look at it and get somebody in there to do that. And you can do this or you might do this. So I, I'm pointing that out just because you pointed that out for the other side. It's, it's kind of both ways there. So, but I don't see a definite plan. And, and honestly, this is an area I don't think is suitable for this at all. I live near there. I already know what the traffic's like there, especially in that particular area. Frankly, when Mr. Bailey wanted to open his business, I was opposed to that. They have proved me wrong thankfully, that their, their business does not have a ton of traffic. But that's a very busy, dangerous place, right in that little area that we have to get in and out of. And it is already there.
We're already functioning out of there.
But.
Mr. Shelton.
One thing isn't absolute, when the state of North Carolina signs off on erosion control plan, that's what we have to implement. So that is a definite answer on erosion control.
Once they do it.
What has to be done. Yeah. It would have to be done.
Question I've got for whether it's Mr. Easter or as far as the order or protocol on doing something like this, is there any way possible, we've heard a lot of things about water, water wells affected, things that are valid concerns, valid questions, runoff, all these things. Can we get any kind of information that before we make a decision that would address that? Now, obviously, I know DEQ could come in and say, you can't do something on this site. But what, what are some options with regard to that that we might have?
I don't know specific how to address any kind of groundwater contamination or anything like that. You're, you're subject to, to some of those concerns on any development you do on that property. If you put a single family dwelling on that property. You know, with this, one, one thing that, that said, since this is a commercial property, there are more controls from the state with clearing, with grading than would be for a, a commercial property. I, I'm sorry, residential property. So, so some of the concerns about runoff, some of the concerns associated with environmental control, the state would be involved from that, from a commercial standpoint. If the property was, was a house or two houses were built on it, there are no controls involved associated with that because you don't have the impervious areas associated with that. There's really no permitting depending on the amount of area that you clear. So in, in regards to aquifer protection or stuff like that, those are just, the safety tank system is designed with that in mind. So they are in, in suitable soils. And what, you know, what was said is, is some of the concerns about runoff was raised during the planning board meeting and it was known that, that all those are handled through DEQ. You know, the, the county does not have an erosion control program, policy, or anything like that. All permitting associated with runoff and everything is done through state DEQ. And the engineers get involved with that. So a lot of those concerns are kind of baked in what is done already and been done on the property with that.
So like if we rezoned it to, for this purpose and then DEQ said, no go, it just becomes a no go?
If DEQ was submitted, and we, we've seen this, the erosion control plans are done by staff engineers. So if, if DEQ says based upon the site, the location of this, it's, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in remediation or what you have to do, that's a no go. We have to go by that before construction, before they get necessary permits. So, you know, with that, that, that is all baked into it. You know, with the permitting process, the, the same thing about traffic. Okay. With this, if, if, if state DOT gets involved in this and determines that based upon the flow, based upon the use, they have to put a turnin lane in. It's responsibility to developer to do that. So that could stop the project as well. So a lot of those concerns are baked in in the pre-permitting process associated with this through DEQ and through DOT.
With our subdivision ordinance, what could go there, right as it speaks now without being zoned, rezoned, I'm sorry?
Without rezoned, it's RAR 20. So single wide, double wide, single family dwelling. If somebody wanted to come and cut it up into a couple of, two lots out there, if they want to do the subdivision ordinance and do that, what it is, churches, some various things like that could go into it as well.
Could it, could it be cut into three at 2.99 acres or two whatever?
If the safety tank system allowed it, yes, it could.
Probably would. So I mean, if it perked.
If it perked, correct, correct. And that, that, that's an if. You would still have to go through the process. But as it's zoned right now, the RAR 20 is a residential type zoning. So, you know, any kind of single family dwellings could be, could be done on that as well.
Other questions? We have not voted on this, but are there any, Karen is taking notes in terms of these stipulations. Richard has presented one. Is there anything else that anyone would want to bring forward in regards to this before we move forward?
Well, I would present the stipulation about moving, even if it's 15, 20 feet, moving it away from being tucked in that southern corner and then putting a further layer of evergreens, hopefully not to be, not to be Leyland cypress. I hope that's not part of the plan because Leyland cypress die and then they have to be cut down. I'm not trying to be smart about that. I just don't want to see Leyland cypress in anybody's plant because it's just like what happened at Bermuda Run. And it happens, they get a blight or a mite or whatever it is. So I would suggest like green giants or holly that's so resistant that grows like crazy. Friend of mine did that to border the rest area from his house and staggered stuff. And now some 12, 15 years later, these, they're like 35 feet tall. You can't find them in there. So that to me would be acceptable. I'm just suggesting moving a little bit further to create even another row as you go down through there. So I would be asking that as an additional concession.
Just.
Room to do that, obviously. We've got the wrong tree.
So I apologize.
I'm not an expert. I just don't want anybody, I really don't want anybody suggesting Leyland cypress from what I've seen.
Terry. Yeah, this is, the seller might throw something at me for saying this, but, but it would seem to me that you would want to know what DEQ was going to say. I mean, it could make this site prohibitively expensive. I mean, that's between you guys, but.
First time for me, Terry. So I've never built a building. So.
I mean, Con, I mean, have you got any thoughts on, I mean, I know, I've seen sites where they, you know, under, they require, we don't have an underground system here that they require, but I mean, I don't, some of the issues that were brought up about all this runoff, it could be. I'm not saying it is. I don't know. But it could be.
Yeah. I've looked at a lot of sites over the years and I feel like it'll work. I mean, my civil engineer's been out there, surveyor's been out there, and they can certainly design it, send it to the state. And then if the state wants to make changes, they'll implement it, send it back. I mean, it's, yeah, it can be, it can be expensive. But at the end of the day, Brad's wanting to build a building there, you know, we'll have to follow those rules by NCDQ.
I don't really understand why you would even consider using a property that might even take that much money with all the other available property in the county and the available property that you already yourself own. I mean, it's, it just makes no sense to me. But the, my fear is that we would vote to rezone this and then you wouldn't, weren't able to do. And who knows who you would sell it to under that same zoning and what would the neighbors get? Is this, is this, there's a lot, a lot of red flags involving this for me.
I believe you indicated it could only be.
Yeah, but it's, but it can be, he can sell it.
But, but, but the specific zoning, if approved, would, would go with it. It's for the, the duration of the property and any other changes to the property, they would have to come back for the planning board as well as this board for approval to change anything. With that caveat, any of the conditions, stay with the property. Okay?
If we did the conditions.
If we do the conditions, which that's what they're asking for. So as we say of the general contractor, and if I'm not sure one thing, I don't have the zoning ordinance with me, but I do believe all outside storage has to be fenced in. I'm pretty sure that's one of the requirements and the definitions of, of, of what that. So all outside storage would have to be in a fenced in area and would not be able to be seen.
Well, now, I don't want to put words in Richard's mouth, but I don't, I, I don't think he was talking about your dumpsters. I think he was talking about those air conditioning units, materials laying on the ground. I don't believe he was talking about fencing. He was saying that would be a stipulation that that would not be allowed.
Got you. Understand, understand. Yeah. Okay.
And you're a.
I would agree with that.
And dumpsters would be fenced in.
Right.
Any dumpsters.
Right.
What would, what was the dumpster fencing again? Eight foot? 10 foot? Okay. Because I know I heard six thrown around some, but 10's.
10 foot fence all the way around.
Okay.
Straight.
I, I would tell the board this. This is a HBCD form of zoning, which is a conditional zoning. And in North Carolina, in Little Hall, not only would this board have to set forth what those conditions are in detail, but then the individual, in this case, would also have to agree to that. My recommendation is that that's done in writing. That's what schools of government and other people say, on the lawyer's list serve even, that it needs to be in writing. So if you do determine that you're moving forward on the rezoning, then you need to make certain that you specify all those conditions in detail with, with pretty much specificity. And then the applicant would have to agree to those and then you reduce it in writing.
Okay.
Well, for the good of the order, can the, the conditions that we've talked about this evening, could someone succinctly say what those are, other than the dumpsters only outside? I'm, I'm with you on that one. But other than that.
The ones that we have added.
Yeah.
I heard dumpsters only outside that fenced, fenced in around the dumpsters. I also heard a movement of the building.
About 20 feet.
20 feet from additional, additional 20 feet from the property line. And then additional.
An additional layer of vegetation.
And so when, if there is a motion.
Not Leyland, not Leyland cypress.
If, if there is a motion, then we will read those stipulations into the motion.
And I assume there was also additional considerations that came through the planning board. You'll need to let the board know what those are too, so that those that had to be.
Those would be included in our addendum to the.
Okay. My question to our attorney is that with all this moving parts and fluidity to our discussion, would it be in order that we defer this and try to hammer out exactly what it is we want?
I would want to have it in writing, signed by all the parties and all, before you actually voted on it.
Well, again, to the petitioner's point, or, you know, we're asking them to do A, B, C, and D. Then I would think he would want to know what it costs.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe not. But I would if I were in your shoes. But, you know, if you're talking about, you know, deferring it, I, I would want it to come back before this board next month.
Yeah.
So we can get on with it.
I mean, he needs, he needs to, to be able to, to get some estimates on some of these things.
Okay. All right. Then we will, we will close the public hearing if we're, if we're done. We will then make a motion. We have three ways we can go with this. And I, I don't want to speak into the legalities, to approve, to disapprove, to approve with conditions, or to defer.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
We can approve with conditions, deny, or defer.
Okay. And then depending on what the motion is, we will add, we will word in what we want. If it's however we want, however this goes, I'll leave it to you guys. But we will, we will then add the addendums to whatever the motion is, deferral, approval, or defeat.
Yes.
Please.
Just one question. And thank you, guys. And I, we want everybody to be happy. We're not trying to be difficult. So if, if these conditions are met, I mean, next month, because we've been working on it a while.
Yeah.
We do have a lease and the guy that I'm leasing from is going to push us out of the building because his business is growing. He needs this space. That's probably my biggest urgency. So if we meet the conditions, do you think we would push forward next month?
We will bring this forward next month. Yep. No question. We, we understand.
This 30 days is going to make that significant a difference for you.
Yeah.
I think my sentiment for deferral is just to hammer out the specifics rather than just do it totally on the fly.
All right. Do I, are we good? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Ms. Finney, Mr. Poindexter second, all in favor of closing the public hearing. All right. Now, the, the floor is open for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to defer it to next month, not to be, you know, not to be dragged out, but to defer it to next month so we can hammer out these stipulations and enumerate them so we know exactly what we've agreed to at the next meeting.
In writing. Yep. Okay. We have a motion from, we have a second from Mr. Poindexter. Now, Mr. Vogler, do we need to go ahead and word these stipulations into the minutes or will we just get those in writing, get them to Mr. Rye?
You've already got them in the minutes.
Okay. All right.
I think she's got, has put all that down.
So, please.
Mr. Chairman, will you, if, if you move forward with this motion for conditions, will you give staff the ability to work this out with the applicant so that we can have it all ready for you at the May meeting?
Would that be a part of your? Would that be a part of your motion?
That would be wonderful.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, and a second, do we have any further discussion?
I would just, I would just like to say, I would encourage those of you who haven't been to this site to go to this site. It's, it, it should be important to note that the one person from the planning board who visited the site voted no. And we have talked for months and months and months about preserving the rural character of Davie County. Every citizen in this county has told us that's what they want, preserve the rural character of our county. Planting a metal building in the center of all these houses is not preserving the rural character. So I would really encourage you to go visit this site, I think it'll be eye-opening to you.
And I would say this, Mr. Vogler, if, if one of the commissioners comes up with an issue that we would like to add to the stipulations prior to getting them to Mr. Rye for signature on the, are we okay to do that, even though we haven't?
You need to get in touch with your planning, planning official there, wherever.
So.
He's standing up here, okay? I thought you'd sit down, okay?
Anything else? Okay. All right, all in favor of the motion to defer for 30 days?
Till next meeting.
Till the next meeting, till the next meeting, thank you, Mr. Poindexter. Okay. All right, public hearing number two. All right, Mr. Easter.
Okay. Thank you, Board. Now, next I present zoning map amendment DC 24-K5-1201. The applicant is Philip Allen. The request is to rezone approximately 5.97 acres from residential 20, R20, to highway business. The subject property is located on Highway 61, 601 South and Lakewood Village Road. The property is further described as Davie County Tax Parcel K5-09-0A-00-1201. The land use plan identifies this as commercial mixed use, this does fall in the Davie County watershed area, this property is in that. The property owner is Philip and Erica Allen, the applicant is Philip Allen. The property size is 5.97 acres, the current use, it is vacant, and the proposed land use would be of a commercial nature. To the north of the property, the land use is commercial, and it's the SP, the special use zoning conditional area. To the west of the property is residential, it's R20. To the south of the property is commercial, it's highway business. To the east of the property is commercial, it's residential, it's highway business, and The property was originally zoned in 1973 as R20. The proposed zoning is highway business. The site will use public water and private septic. Davie County Comprehensive Land Use Plan identifies this as a commercial mixed use area. The Growth Enhancement Strategy Plan identifies this as a rural growth area. With this, it's a little bit different, this is a, a general rezoning, so this is not a conditional rezoning, so when the board making this consideration cannot consider any possible uses, but all uses in the highway business district. So tonight, we have three things, we could rezone, deny, or defer, and I will say at the, this crisis, March 26th planning board meeting, I think my date's wrong, it was approved by the planning board unanimously to go through the rezoning process. Be more than happy to address any questions that this board may have.
I, I do have just one brief question, why a general versus a conditional?
In subsequent conversations with the applicant, the applicant owns the property to the south of it, already has a business located on it, initial conversations with the applicant indicated that they want to extend part of the business, but they don't want to be limited to just that, they don't really want to know what they're going to do future. Currently, the applicant is operating automotive-type sales leases, or, I don't.
Repair.
Repair, repair, there we go, I was going to get there, so, business, he wanted to use that, but down the road, with the size of the property, he didn't want to be limited to just that specifically, I tried to, in conversation and target him in that area, but didn't want to be limited to that, so that's when.
So, so with the use, with the use of the property, if we rezone it, this is my word, not yours, be basically unlimited?
No, it wouldn't be unlimited, but I do, if you, if you do, I did bring, in case that come up in the table of uses.
Yes.
What would be allowable in that area and what would not. So there is a, a lot of intended uses that would be, that would be used in that area. Probably, maybe 50-plus, some are permitted with conditions, some are not, so whether the property could be utilized for that, they would still have to meet specific conditions, but this is, like we said, a general use rezoning, and it's not a specific use.
And does that include any kind of buffering requirements or anything?
It, it, it would, depending on the buffering requirements, the zoning ordinance is pretty clear about the zoning ordinance, there's different levels, A, B, or C, depending on what the neighboring property would be, would dictate the buffering, and then also, depending on the use, if there were any specific conditions outlined in the zoning ordinance that, that, for the use of that property, they would have to meet those requirements as well. So it's all going to come down to what the use is, like, like, like with this.
And that all happens when they come for a permit?
Correct, comes with a permit. One thing I will say, that for commercial use, since this is in a watershed area, some of the clearing and some of the development area would be limited to the size and the scope of the property.
And that would be the North Carolina Department of Natural Resources.
Correct, correct, and when, when they submitted to us, since it is in protected watershed area, we're looking at how much area is impervious, we're looking at potentially 1070 provision, they would have to come for this board to ask and allocate, so, just because the whole entirety of the area is, plus there's no access to municipal sewer out there currently, so you're going to be limited to the size and scope, how large is the septic tank field going to be, too, as well. So there's a lot of things built into this that normally we don't see with large parcels, with the proximity and the fact that it is in a watershed would limit substantial growth, and then plus with the septic tank area with that.
All right, Mr. Vogler?
Chairs and all, this is Dan I of the public hearing, present chapter 160D of General Statutes, North Carolina, Chapter 155 of the Davie County Code of Ordinance, of an amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding Davie County Map K5-09-0A-00-1201, located on US Highway 601 South, consisting of approximately 5.97 acres from residential 20 to highway business. There's been due notice pursuant to the requirements of North Carolina General Statutes and the North Carolina, and the Davie County Code of Ordinance by way of due publication notices of the public hearing and newspaper of general circulation in Davie County. Clerk to the board has attached an affidavit showing publication in said paper. I'd ask all who wish to comment at this public hearing to come forward to podium, state your name for the board, and then comment on the proposal, and Mr. Chair, no one had signed up.
Okay. If, if it doesn't take you 10 minutes, what are the, what are the listed uses on that table of?
Sure, some of these have conditions, so pet care would be permitted with conditions, pet shops would be permitted, school, daycare is permitted with conditions, a library, public buildings, offices administrative, public safety, public works, hospital, medical laboratories, building contractors, those are permitted with conditions, fruit vegetable markets, machines and welding, warehousing, self-storage, rural resort and retreat, private recreational facilities, churches, ATM machines, indoor commercial amusement, outdoor commercial amusement is permitted with conditions, baking and financing, broadcast studios, automatic car wash is permitted with conditions, full-service car wash, car wash self-service is permitted with conditions, here's a long list, convenience store, retail, restaurant, restaurant with a drive-thru, restaurant without a drive-thru, retail non-store, retail large, retail medium, riding stables, shopping center, business services, business services B, which would be permitted with conditions, indoor shooting range, wholesale trade A, wholesale trade B, adult establishments are permitted with conditions, assembly halls, automotive parking lot, motor vehicle sales, rental and leasing is permitted with conditions, automotive paint and body shop is permitted with conditions, motor vehicle maintenance, backyard workshops, and an accessory use to a dwelling unit, commercial district, bike, motorcycle, lawnmower, and fire saw sales service, billiards and pool halls, building supply stores is permitted with conditions, cabinet worker, cabinet woodworking and upholstery shops, dry cleaning, laundry pickup, exterminators, farm machinery sales and service, feed stores, floral shops, funeral homes, greenhouses, commercial permitted with conditions, group development, pawn shops, laundromats, locksmiths, miniature golf courses, hotels, motels, tourist, office supplies, optical stores, pet shops with outside runs, professional office, taxi cap stands, indoor theaters, theaters, drive-ins permitted with conditions, trucking operations, congregate care facilities is permitted with conditions, habilitation facility A and B are permitted with conditions, nursing care institution are permitted with conditions, progressive care, community with conditions, hotels, accessory uses, temporary seasonal uses, modular class homes, facilities, commercial signs.
I'm okay, Mr. Easter, you know.
Would it be fair to say it's everything except industrial?
Correct. Correct. I just, I read the list, and when I said it's 10 minutes, I apologized, and I was like, oh, next page, next page, it kept going.
No problem, any other questions?
Question is that, the property adjacent to that is, which business is that, I'm trying to visualize.
Which, which one, to the north?
Um, to the.
16 and 42.
To the south.
1628's field car.
Yeah, steel car, Mr. Allen.
Right, that's what I thought.
Motel, yeah.
Does that qualify as an adult establishment as well, even though we have the park circled by?
Well, those are, the conditions would have to be made, in general, by, by general statute, we have to allow that in Davie County now. Where they go, they have to meet this laundry list of things, but highway, highway, or highway business is one of the areas that they can go, yeah. But now, whether or not they can deal through the necessary permits and get the necessary zoning permits to deal with that, there's a lot of stuff on here, you're subject to the septic tank, you're subject to the approval, and just because it's zoned for that doesn't necessarily mean that it can go in, you still have to jump through tons and tons of hoops for them.
But if it, this went through, and it was zoned general use, and the applicant decided they were going to put a business, put a business, they would have to come before the planning board?
Yeah.
So if it's on that list.
They can do it, correct.
They can do it.
Correct.
But if it's on the list with special conditions, then they have to meet those conditions.
Before we get a bill and permit, but it, but, but they can do it, it's allowable to do that, yeah, correct.
Any other questions? Nobody speaking?
Everyone coming?
All right, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close.
Ms. Finney, Mr. Poindexter II, all in favor, okay, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the rezoning.
Okay, Ms. Finney makes the motion, do we have a second?
I'd second.
Mr. Schoeff, any other discussion?
Uh, just generals, just a general comment, I think, just make sure I'm clear on this, the planning board approved this.
Unanimously.
Unanimously. So I'll just say that, you know, I think that takes credence, and I know the board has expressed a lot of the sentiment that we want our board, our board is filled with competent people, and we want to not reverse decisions, so when I heard that's unanimous, that told me a lot.
Did we vote? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. West?
Good evening, I'm here to talk about the February financial summary, you can see that starting on page 67 of your agenda packet. This compares February year-to-date this fiscal year versus February year-to-date last fiscal year. You can see here, we have about $1.9 million more in revenues, most of that, as you can see, is in property tax line, our property tax collection percentage is a bit better than it was last year. We also have a bit more in sales tax, state grants, and we also have about a million dollars more expenditures, that's mostly due to the accounting of contributions made to other funds. Most other items are comparable to last fiscal year. For a frame of reference, the February year-to-date revenues are 70% of estimates compared to 69% in the prior fiscal year, and expenditures are less than 50%, and about 67% is eight months' worth, is what we're looking at. Let me know if you have any questions.
Where does this put us as far as achieving our goal to get back up to the, what our ordinance requires as far as fund balance?
Yes, as you recall, last fiscal year ending, 2023, June 30th, we did make progress back towards that goal, so we've increased it to about 20%. The way this fiscal year is running very similarly, I expect to see, you know, another addition to fund balance. I don't know at this point if we'll get back to 25% at the end of the fiscal year, but my hope is that we'll add to it.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? All right, Mr. Moore?
Good evening, good evening, get set up here. So before you tonight, we have three items, we're going to bake this as quick as possible. First is our system-wide comprehensive recreation park master plan update, we will be, just as a matter of, of order, we will be asking for the adoption of this plan as it bakes into our future grants, which we'll also be talking about tonight. Following the system-wide, we'll slide over into the Lake Louise Master Plan, which will be for that approval, and then finally, a part of support for our application for Lake Louise Park. Now I'm going to turn it over to Nate Halupka, our consultant with McGill, who's going to take us through the system-wide comprehensive master plan update.
Commissioners, good evening, I will, you've each had the chance to review the plan that, that we're going to go through, so what I'm actually going to do is hit the high points. I do want to set a little bit of a context, I've had the chance to work in Parks and Recreation for about 20 years, a lot of which has been in a consulting role, or I've actually run the, the North Carolina Parks and Rec Trust Fund grant. What I've had the chance to do is see how different communities across the state have grappled with growth, and. And the due diligence that I've seen tonight really speaks volumes to how much care and compassion you have about getting it right. And what, what I want to do is use that to parlay into how much of an effort we had in understanding the public's need as we move forward. And one theme came through, and I actually heard a couple of times tonight, is there is a lot of interest from the public in protecting your rural heritage. So what we, what we've seen through the Parks and Recreation System, what we'll go through tonight, is how that theme works its way into what could be the future of your park system. So first up, a big thing I want to go through, and I'm going to go through this relatively quickly, is there was a lot of planning that went into this. And, and big pieces of that were understanding the public's need through surveys, through public meetings, through focus groups. And then next, we have kind of the different sections within each one of the plan. All this is to do is to highlight, and you've each had a chance to see each one of the, the plans. This goes through a methodical process to where we understand the context that Davie County is, we understand the public's needs. We use that and we use your input and we use staff's input to analyze and compare it to other benchmark communities. And then form our decisions based on that information so that we can help you cast a vision for what the future of Parks and Recreation in Davie County would look like. So what I want to do is part of that context or overall understanding is share with you what you currently have, which is a new system. You have a relatively young system as far as it goes as Parks and Recreation Systems, but that doesn't mean that it's bad. It's actually quite good. You have a very good start. A lot of that is to be attributed to the leadership that you have within your community and utilizing the resources that you have quite well. So what you have up on the screen, those two large circles are generally the two parks that you have within your system. And certainly there's the smaller assets that you have in the Brock Center. So moving on, like I said, we, we took a lot of time to compare Davie County on national best standards. And a lot of that is taking a look at how much parking could you have in comparison to comparable communities across the country. What we are seeing is some of these big trends is that you have community parks, you have mini parks, you have the prospects of additional mini parks and Lake Louise coming. But some of the things that you are currently absent within the system and could be looking at in the future are a large district park, an additional neighborhood parks. But basically, the big thing that I want you to take away from is there is an interest, there is in a comparative process. You, you have the need for additional parkland. What I want to see is, so in theory, if, if you have this additional parkland, what are you going to do with it? We wanted to reach out to the community. We did that in several different ways. Like I said, we actually did two surveys, it's statistically valid, and then we also did a survey that was open to the entire public. We did several community input meetings. We had focus group meetings and all of that, all told, brought up over nine hundred individuals shared across the whole county what their interest in seeing what Davie County's Parks and Recreation System is going to look like. And this further kind of alludes to that. We did a really deep dive or a blanket effort to try and get that word out, and it actually produced really good results. What I want to do is, since you've had the chance to review the plan, I'm going to hit some high points about what that public input shared. So some of the things that came through as strategic needs for land acquisition. So one, I showed before that there was a benchmark study that showed that you needed additional parkland. Some of the things that came through from the general public was the additional need for additional parkland and additional walkability. And then it'll be important to see what actually happens with that parkland as we move forward. So these are some of the top ten strategic needs that are driven by those expressed needs that came from the community. They have a desire for additional parks and green spaces. They have a desire for additional programs. And that kind of speaks to the relative youngness of the department. The other things that are came, that come through is that they want some uniqueness within this. So like I said, you have a rural heritage that's important to the community. They want to see these parks kind of visioned out or play a fractional piece of what that rural heritage looks like across the entire community. They also want to see that there is some way in which it's support, that the park amenities in some way, shape or form are able to support that need also. Next up, there is also the understanding that we're not just looking at acquiring additional parkland and growing programs. There's an understanding that staffing would need to, to go in lockstep with that. One of the key pieces that I want to point out here is the inclusion as a recommendation for a business manager. Different park systems have different needs. It's one thing to grow rural heritage, it's another to be able to understand that you have visitors that are attracted to this area. You have a way to capture that investment from your participants. A business manager would help direct that and capture some of the profit or return funds that would come from developing out of park system. So what we envision moving forward as you, as you invest into this rural heritage is more or less a spine that runs from south to north within the community. It's honestly, some of the largest areas that we're seeing for high priority are up in the northern portion of the county. This are also understand that there are pieces within the county that, you know, additional land banking should take consideration. But not so far as actually recommending specific locations. So what you'll see up there are the triangles. So we're recommending land be purchased in northern, northern, southern, eastern and western sections. But with the northern portion receiving consideration. Up first with land acquisition, but we also see the additional need for a smaller neighborhood park to meet that niche along I-40. So finally, and I want to start to close this up, but it is important to understand that there's two frames of thoughts that I typically see in communities as they're looking at Parks and Recreation. One, see Parks and Rec is a means that's similar to like a police department or a fire department that is just an expenditure. It happens, you get a service that comes out of it. The other one that I see, and I really hope that this is more that, that is gravitated towards, is seeing Parks and Recreation as an investment. That help increase property values, that grow economic development, that improve visitor spending. Because a lot of the parks amenities, the cultural events that you have also draw in tourism and economic development in the area. So the funds that you would be looking would not only be investing into the rural heritage, but would also be able to spur on that further economic development. It pays dividends if you invest in the Parks and Recreation. And then the second thing is, as you're investing these dollars into your park system, being mindful of ways in which you can take that investment that comes from communities' dollars and leverage that with state and federal tax dollars. And we'll get to a little bit of the specifics of how that's actually playing out. In particular with Lake Louise, should that, should we be successful with a grant application there? I did, like I said, I wanted to go through that pretty quickly. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. You have seen the plan. And certainly, like I said, I've meant to hit the high points. I want to take a pause here and answer any questions that you have. And then like Paul said, this is up for consideration. If it does become adopted, it does help with your grant considerations and funding considerations. So, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions?
Just curiosity quickly, is the, these parks or this land you're talking about, you got any idea how many acres you're talking about per park?
It goes into that within the specifics. So one of the deficits that it shows is overall you're at a deficit of a hundred and seventy-four acres, give or take, right now. But that is right now. So as we're looking forward, it moves up north of that. It is atypical for a community to bite off that with one fair bite. But that, that sometime is really dependent upon what opportunities are out there. What I will say is property values tend to go up over time. So the investment that takes place in the short term pays dividends or is actually sometimes more cost-effective than waiting five, six, 10 years down the road to buy land that is twenty, thirty percent higher in value. So that's just something to consider.
Other questions? All right. Paul, you need an approval for?
Correct. The, the adoption for the system-wide plan, this takes us now ten years out before we look at another update. But it also helps with our other state funding grant opportunities that we have. Each one of those is you have to have a comprehensive master plan that is updated within some years or outside of our ten-year frame. So now anything that we apply for, a comprehensive plan equals a much better chance of, of funding for grants.
Well, I'll tell you, all I've heard this weekend is Diamond Rio. I'm telling you, man, that's a good one. You made a good choice. That was a good choice. My daughter is excited about that.
Little Texas is Diamond Rio. And that's part, that's part of, it's part of, we talk about investing. You invested in this initial park. And some of the things that our residents are really gravitating toward is the seed that we're planting. Whereas if you go to the park systems in all the surrounding counties, if you visited one, you've seen most of all. There, there's a couple of anomalies, anomalies like Dan Nickless or Tanglewood or Salem, maybe Jennings Park in Iredale. I look at a different status quo buster in that, and why are we looking at looking at wanting twenty-five, thirty parks within our system? I look at a return on investment on these pieces to where your example of a future ag center mixed with a few other elements. These are things in which I foresee families bringing their extended families from Ohio, Pennsylvania, Florida, Texas. And to be able to come and spend a week in one of, in Davie County, at one of our, say, seven parks. And they can experience something completely and totally different over time. But looking at each one of those and what are the specifics and how are we going to get a return on and a quality of life return on investment for each one of those?
Thanks, Paul. We, so we need a motion, and what is this titled now? Comprehensive master?
Master plan update.
Okay. Comprehensive master plan update. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ms. Finney, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Renninger, any other questions? All right. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Okay, what's next?
What's next?
As he's loading that up. So each one of the parks tells a different story of the rural heritage. So Lake Louise Park has been a part of the, an asset within Davie County for a number of years. One of the things that came out of this was the opportunity to work with the current landowners. And to see that there might be the potential to utilize their interest in, in potential benevolence to leverage it with grant funds from the state. To do that and to do that well and get strong consideration from the grant funding body, a planning document's needed to understand what the public wants and make sure that any type of development lines up with that public interest. So that's what I'm going to briefly go through here next. This is the site-specific master plan that goes with Lake Louise Park. So if you think about it, you have a comprehensive plan. And then within that, you have smaller facets that are, that, that point towards needs such as Lake Louise Park and others. I'm going to go through this quite quickly. Again, this is backed upon, it's backed up with public input, both that we got from the community, from the comprehensive plan that we just went through, as well as additional. One of the key things that I want to draw from is the way in which we did the comprehensive plan lets us drill down into different segments or areas within the county's population, of which we utilize not only just the overarching need of the community, but more explicitly what is needed within the area of the county from the populace there. And that's where, if you'll see up on the green, those are green, those are needs that have been expressed by the community that are going to be met explicit by, explicitly by the development that's outlined within Lake Louise Park. It's important to line up public interest with specific needs, and this is what this plan helps us do. We went through this furthermore, not only to understand those needs, but go through several different alternate designs. So alternate A, where it's a relatively small piece of property, so a lot of the things stayed the same. This one in comparison to B, which I'll show here in a second, looked at having a potential dog park in there or a small piece for a dog park and a bocce ball court. Alternate B had an additional shelter, an additional gathering spaces, a little bit more open, have a place to pull people together. We then kind of landed on a final, but we also wanted to understand what the public needed and wanted. So we took that final, worked with the Parks and Rec Department, and Paul gathered input from the public to understand what they liked, what they didn't like, which ultimately rolled into what the final concept ended up being, which is looking at eventually having a pour-and-play surface on the playground, additional fitness equipment, a gaga pit, gathering spaces, additional walking trails, lawn games and an additional shelter. So a little bit more of a passive-style park that is moving forward. And what this actually helps with is it's not just a plan for that park, but it also, like Paul said, in, in addition to the comprehensive plan, this helps with additional planning or the planning components of the grant funding that's going to be sought after. And what that explicitly is aligning you up to do is because of the benevolence of Dr. Edwards and their family is being able to potentially use their, their benevolence as the match to go after five hundred thousand dollars of state funding. So this is understanding what the public needs and planning it and doing it in a way that could potentially set up and see that good that was paid forward with additional state dollars that will make this park even better. So I'm going to, I'm going to pause there for a second and I will turn and answer any questions that you have. I'm happy to answer it.
So Paul and I have already spoken about this, but for transparency, I would like for this to be addressed publicly. Because I was very concerned with the fact of moving the parking lot and using, tearing up grass and putting down pavement and then tearing up pavement and putting down grass. Because common sense-wise, that's just a waste of money. So if you can address that, please.
Sure. So one of the things that's important is looking at the entrance and egress to a park site. And right now, that adjacent parcel is privately owned. All right? So in the long-term best interest, it is ideal to have a permanent ingress and egress to the site. Now, if it comes up to where, if the grant's approved and if there's any consideration for any other permanent entrance way that's formalized, then there might be the chance that additional, that that park space is not utilized for parking, but is utilized for additional parkland. But given where we're at with the timeline of things and the application of May first is coming up, it is important, in my professional opinion, to first have like permanent access and egress into the site. And then if the other access or egress changes in a formal way, then you can reconsider what actually goes on site.
Alter it. Okay.
Yeah, so that's, so one of the things that I used to do is manage the Parks and Rec Trust Fund. So a change like that, if an alternate entrance becomes possible, is a contractual change, but that does, one that would not give a blight to the county if that shift needed to take place.
I just know it's an expensive change.
It is, it is. And, and you know, ideally that materializes to where you have that all-in access. And then instead of pavement, you have additional park elements or additional green space on site.
And the other thing is just a comment, and again, Paul and I have spoken about this, but, and I think the changes have probably been made to make this very neighborhood-friendly, which is very concerning to that neighborhood, especially a lot of older folks live there. But I think that that's, that it's much closer to what I think they'll be in favor of now.
And that's why it was important for us to not only plan, but hear from the community itself what their vision of it was. And we solidly take that into consideration whenever we're proposing that formal.
Although somehow some of them still didn't get the message, so we'll work on that, though.
It was amazing to see Thursday, we had nine. Saturday, we had eighteen.
Awesome.
It was great. A much, much different meeting. But it was a welcome.
Yes, because Thursday was a little concerning, yes.
Duncan and Matt were there to share, and we had some more light expressed on potential changes, and that made all the difference.
Good, good.
And, and real quick, this plan also segues into a Parks and Rec Trust Fund application grant, which has additional public input. If you're seeing a theme, we're trying to hear from the public a lot. So the comprehensive plan helps with scoring. All of the public input that we're doing helps with the scoring. If this plan that we just discussed was adopted, that helps with the scoring. And then certainly, we're making the, the substantial progress that we need to put together a solid application.
Do you then just need a vote on the approval of the Lake Louise plan? Do you need, do we need a third?
What you have before you in your packet is a, is a resolution that covers both. And you can, you can still do that in the form of, it would be good to have that in the form of a motion for minutes because we'll have to include.
I'm good with that. Do you need one or two? It's included in one resolution.
My understanding of if the resolution both adopts the site-specific master plan and the board is in support of pursuing Parks and Rec Trust Fund, then in one action, you can cover both.
Okay. It's not clear on our, on our minutes what you needed from us, so, or on our, our agenda. Okay, so tell us what we, in terms of what you need in terms of the motion.
So in a motion, you would, you would make a motion to approve, adopt the site-specific master plan for Lake Louise Park as well as adopt the support of Davie County's part of application for twenty twenty-four.
Okay. So we need, we need a, we need a.
That's in that part of attachment.
We need a combined motion on the Lake Louise plan and then the part of, the part of application. Okay. All right. Do I have a motion? Richard makes that motion specific to, I'm sure Karen. to, I'm sure Karen's got it. Do we have a second?
A second.
Brent seconds. Any other questions for these fine gentlemen? All right, all in favor? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all y'all's hard work.
It's definitely worth it. I've had the pleasure of driving through as we're going through the planning process and even driving through, and y'all are creating and continue to create an amazing place to live and to work and play, and that's why it's drawing in so many people. So y'all are the ones who can be applauded for your hard work.
Well, just move on over here.
That's right, come on.
It is definitely a place that draws in a lot of people, and it's attractive.
Thank you. We appreciate you. All right. Next, the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Poindexter, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Finney, any other questions? All in favor? Okay. Mr. Barnett?
Mr. Chairman, I have no report tonight.
All right. We appreciate that. Any old business? Any new business? All right, commissioners' comments. Richard, you will start.
I'd just like to say thank you to everybody who came out tonight, brought up some things we hadn't thought of. That property that we discussed earlier, that, I don't know if you noticed the picture or not, but in the bottom corner, that's where my grandmother lived. So I got to go over every square foot of all that property as I was growing up, and I know exactly what's there, along with riding down the road there and seeing what's there, what's changed since then. But anyway, I hope we can work out something favorably for the people that live there. And I'd like to thank all the JIM Award winners for all the hard work and contributions that they do. I know you weren't here when they were passed out, but appreciate your contributions. And that's it. Hope y'all come back next month.
Thanks, Richard. Terry?
Appreciate everyone coming out and staying to the bitter end. Again, I would like to congratulate the JIM Award winners as well. Very deserving. And come back next month. Thank you.
Brent?
Be brief. I'd like to say a shout-out to the JIM winners and all the other county employees. You're very valuable, and the information you've provided has demonstrated by tonight. Had a lot of discussion, a lot of information from our different departments. Thank you.
Ms. Beneda?
Cameron, you weren't here when we passed out the awards. Congratulations. But also, right behind you, I want to give a shout-out because your award mentioned all the volunteers that you called in to make all those events happen, and I want to give a shout-out to them as well, because you couldn't do it by yourself, but you're, but they come whenever you need them. So thank you for coordinating all of that and all that you do every day. I just hope everyone had a happy Easter. I hope everyone stopped to remember the reason for Easter, because as Christians, that's the most important day in our lives. That's the day that Jesus granted us our salvation. So I hope we all remembered that. And working in my other job, I'm often reminded how short life is, how tragic life can be, and how wonderful our unspoken heroes are in this county. So I can't give details, but I have some people that need some recognition, and I'm just going to call their names. Sam Frye, Sidney Jones, Brian Blunkall, Andrew Beck, Joseph Krotz, and Rescue Squad members Andy and Sandy Lipscomb. They've been an extra blessing. We're very fortunate to have them, and thank you all for being here.
All right. We are now going into a very brief closed session. Let me read this. Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three-one-eight point one-one A three, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which is, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. So we will, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go in closed session and a five-minute break.
All right, got you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Okay, we will go into closed session with a five-minute break.